So I'm Ray Rickman, Chair of this Special Committee for Commemorative Works, which the City Council in its wisdom has created to benefit the people of Providence and beyond. And it's exciting work so far. And I want to welcome everybody on the Zoom and elsewhere, and then, of course, all the members of the board. And so we're going to start with a roll call, and it is 12:11, and I'm Ray Rickman.
Rebecca Davis.
Derek Christopher.
April Brown.
Stephanie Fortunato.
Caleb Porton.
So we have a quorum and staff from the city. And so we are ready to start. If any member has anything they want to say before we start. It's nice to see you face to face, everyone. So our very first, going to start with Councilman David Salvatore. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, and Commission members. First, allow me to thank you for this work. I was one of the co-sponsors of the resolution creating this committee. And certainly, the City Council believes that it's important to share the various cultures and history with our residents who we represent. I think, you know, the work that you are doing certainly tells a story about our, again, rich history, cultures, how we can make improvements, and how we can do better, just as a city. So thank you for the work that you're doing. I believe it's item number two on your agenda today, is requesting that a monument that was installed at La Fozia Square be moved from its current location to a new location across the street. Most recently, we learned that the monument that was reinstalled in 2017 was vandalized. And there is a story behind the monument that was there. I'll give you a brief history of the modern history of it. In 2013, the city decided to repave Admiral Street. And in doing so, the monument went missing for First Class Private La Fozia. First Class Private La Fozia, Private First Class La Fozia never made it home for World War I. And it was very important to the family that that monument be rededicated, which we did in 2017. We reinstalled it. Unfortunately, again, it was vandalized recently. So we are asking today that that monument be moved across the street. And we, working with Stephanie Fortunato and her team, in the Department of Arts, Culture and Tourism, and Caleb Porton, our City Archivist, we have plans to really create a story around not only the contributions that Private First Class La Fozia made, but to those veterans who never made it home from the Great War. So I do want to recognize Stephanie and Caleb for their hard work. But again, the request today is to move that monument, a new monument, from its current location across the street. I do want to recognize and introduce the O'Connors, Jerry and Tom. They are nephews of Private First Class La Fozia, and they would like to share with you some history, and again, the contributions that were made by the La Fozia family during a very difficult time in our country's history. So Tom, Jerry, if you'd like to come up and share your uncle's story?
Do you want me to bring some of these photos up?
Yeah. Good idea.
Should I grab these photos?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
My name is Jeremiah O'Connor, and I am the nephew of Carlo La Fozia, who lost his life in the Argonne Forest on October the 18th, October the 11th, 1918, one month before the end of the war. And in the course of his demise, his remains were never found. Consequently, there was no body to be sent home to the family. And the federal government took note of that in 1923. They disinterred the bodies that had been buried in France, the land that had been bought by the United States government, and they sent all those bodies home to be buried in The unfortunate part of Carlo's situation is that there was no body to be moved. And he kind of got the short side of the whole thing. But in 1933, the city of Providence, in its wisdom, dedicated the square, known to most people as Eagle Park, the junction of Douglas Avenue and Admiral Street, to his memory. And when I was a little guy, I would visit my grandmother's house, which was five houses down from the square. And I'd walk up there, and there was a big bronze with flags sticking out of it. And for a little kid, I always felt he was a hero. As the saying goes, the heroes are buried in the countries that they fought in. And so was his case. He was buried in, not buried, but they took note of him in the Musa Argonne Cemetery, with a little notation at the bottom of a tablet that said, Private First Class Carlo La Fozia, KIA, October 11, 1918, 30 days before the end of the war. To go back to the part about the city of Providence, they dedicated that square to him in 1933. And as I said, I used to go visit it all the time. Anytime I went to my grandmother's, I went to see my hero uncle's memorial, this big bronze thing. And it was a feeling of, I guess, for a little kid, kind of a patriotic feeling about him. So he was endeared to me. In 2012, my mother passed away. And I, after the funeral and whatnot, I said to my wife, I said, "Come on, we're going to take a look at the old neighborhood." And we drove over there. And we pulled into the square, and I said to my wife, "The memorial's gone. It was all reconstructed." She said, "No, it's not." She says, "There, it's on a post over there." I said, "Where?" She said, "That telephone pole. There's a board up there that says Carlo La Fozia Memorial Square." I said, "That's not right. That should not be. It should be what it was," or something similar to it. And I got lucky. Councilman Salvatore, I called him, got the ball rolling, and with the efforts of some great folks in the City Hall, they rededicated the square in 2017. Where they rededicated it, it was kind of a tough spot. It was an angled piece of, a turn section of Douglas Admiral. But it sufficed. I would go on Memorial Day, I'd flag it. I'd put flags on it. And I had to make special blanks full of flags to fit inside the holders. Well, don't you know, I'd come back a week later, the flags were broken off, or there'd be one flag left. And it got, they'd be really, the disrespect part of it was kind of sad. So I would go on Memorial Day, I'd go on Veterans Day, and at Christmas, we'd lay a wreath on the stone. My wife said to me, "That's not going to last." I said, "Well, you know, let's see." I said, "We try it. If it works fine, if it doesn't, well, that's another story." The wreath lasted until the first of the year. I had to go back and untie it. The respect for the wreath was okay, but the flags didn't go. Somebody had some bad feeling about the American flag. I don't know who might do that, but that was the case. And going back to the early part of this year, I went there one day, and the stone was broken over, chipped on the edge, and somebody suggested somebody hit it with a car. I'm a former cop. First thing I did was, I did my own physical examination of it, and I said, "Somebody knocked it over and broke the top on it." And it's really sad. That stone is Carlo La Fozia's spiritual burial. That's what that stone's all about. If you have to understand why or what, that's exactly what it is. He didn't have, there was no body to bury him. So the only symbol of his existence and his sacrifice was this stone that's going to be put in the square. Now, I talked to Councilman Salvatore about it, and I thought the stone that was there, it was a nice stone. It was kind of low to the ground and kind of not tall enough to have a real influence on the person looking at it. And in seeing all the stones, gravestones and whatnot, I saw that there was, if his picture was on there. Well, the pictures aren't that great. They're 31918. But that photograph would be nice if they could make it fit the face of the stone, make the stone taller than the old stone was, do the text of his demise on the top of it. And that would make, you could identify the man with the stone. And I felt that if that could happen, there might not be too many people going to try to knock it over because it has that influence, that personal part of it. And just because it was 100 years ago, doesn't mean to say that he shouldn't be remembered. And the respect that goes with that continue on. And Councilman Salvatore's been a great influence on that. Want to thank him publicly for that. I live in Seacock, Massachusetts. I'm not far away. But it's nice to know that the city, I was born in this city, as was my brother and my sisters, and all of our family. And Carlo was born in this city. He's a favorite Italian son, if you will. You know, it really says a lot about, he had two brothers. One was in the Army, and another was in the Air Force. The family was very military oriented. When something had to be done, they showed up, as he did. And hopefully, he won't be forgotten. And whatever you do is going to be of size and an amount that is, makes it obvious. And if you do that, his spirit will be satisfied. So we want to thank you, and we're going to have the City Archivist speak for just a minute.
So you did a wonderful job going over the history. I'll just brief really quick, just as part of the record. Oh, sorry. So Carlo La Fozia of Providence was born 1897 to Italian immigrants, Domenico and Filomena La Fozia. He was killed in France during the Great War, and he was the private first class of the 16th Infantry Regiment. The 16th was one of the first American battalions to land on French soil in June of 1917. For more than a year, La Fozia and his fellow infantrymen fought the Germans holding the Argonne Forest along the Western Front. Known as the Argonne Offensive and part of the 100-day offensive, it was one of the final pushes of the Allied forces and one of the deadliest and biggest offenses in World War I. Nearly 27,000 American soldiers were killed, including La Fozia, on October 11, 1918, just one month before the armistice of November 11, 1918. La Fozia's body was never recovered, and his name is engraved in tablets of the missing at the Boys' Argonne American Cemetery, the resting place of more than 14,000 Americans who gave their lives in World War I. La Fozia was called an emblem of Italian loyalty to the Stars and Stripes, and was honored by the Province Board of Alderman on August 3, 1933, when they dedicated the square in his name. It was rededicated in November 11, 2017, as the councilman has expressed. So with that, you know, we had a wonderful ceremony. We had a World War I reenactor come out, play taps. I would love to try to recreate something like that again as a ceremony to rededicate a new monument. I feel strongly on this, that we can make this bigger and better. And I do approve of having an etching of his image on the stone. I think that would be very powerful and would drive home the message that there's a human beaten behind this stone. It's a memorial to a veteran that served in World War I.
And you're speaking for your brother also?
Yes. Actually, there's quite a few of us collectively, but I'm retired, so it's, I'm the guy.
Your veil.
As long as I can get there, I'm all set.
So we're going to move to the members of the Commission and see if there's any questions of either one of you.
So.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I think it's, thank you for being here today to share your story. And I think it's a wonderful idea to share the literal story of your family member in the site. I think having the language there, the story of this person's life, and also their sacrifice, will go a long way in helping not only to keep their memory alive, but also to communicate the sacredness of the site.
I actually do have a question. Thank you so much for your story and the story of your family. I love that. My question is about the location. So it's located, I'm looking at the photograph here, and so it's on where the A's is where it's currently located?
That's right.
And so it would be moved across the street in front of the house?
This is actually a set of three businesses.
Okay.
And so it's, there is an empty tree well, as you can see.
Yes.
And so the proposal is to use that empty tree well, which is currently being used to some temporary signage by one of the adjacent businesses, and to repurpose that tree well for this marker.
Right. So that it would give it more depth and breadth, so that people can understand that it's a monument as opposed to a marker, yes?
Absolutely, yes. And we've had some preliminary conversations, both with the city forester about repurposing that tree well, and he was in support. I have the contact information for the adjacent business owners, and so we would naturally reach out and, you know, make sure that they are in agreement, so that location should be used. And the thought is that we might have enough space there to also be able to provide some of the treatment that we discussed, actually, in the spring around that other marker relocation. You know, as we're hearing, you know, more visibility and more awareness of the marker, but more space also to give it some, just more respectful sighting.
Another question. Does the city have anything that talks about World War I in terms of its public memorials or monuments?
That's a good question for our archivist.
Yeah, we do have the World War I memorial on South Main Street.
South Main Street, okay. Huh, okay.
But what do you suggest? Thank you.
To connect it in some way, right? You know, sometimes these memorials are so disconnected, and it would be nice to have a reference to that memorial or to other memorials, so that, I think, the ignorance is the reason why things are destroyed. And so if you're going to do this, we should do the work so that people can have a reference point, but also have a reference to see something else, if that makes sense.
Yes, I agree. But we've had a number of these in the middle of the street, and people use it, use the spot as a place to run to get to the other side. And they almost never pause. And they never thoughtfully pause. So this is, you know, this whole suggestion of moving it to a real place. And even if you were far across the street, on occasion, you'd be on the other side of the street, and you could see it. But I also, like, I drove by the other day, and hopefully, it's going to feel like this is adopted.
Yes.
Versus, no offense to the city, but, you know, sitting in the middle of the street, never mind, I'm glad you didn't hear me.
It would be nice to be able to go to that memorial site.
Yeah.
And put the flags on it. Hopefully, they stay there. And I have a group of retired cops in fire in Pawtucket. And we have a Civil War cemetery on Minno Spring Avenue. And we do the same thing on Memorial Day and Veterans Day. We flag their graves. And it's, sometimes the schoolchildren will come there to help. They really get a history lesson that has some significance to it. So this isn't just Carlo's resting place. It's a memento of time that says to our youth and our country.
And to us.
That we fought very hard and lost a lot of lives so that we could stand up and feel free. And he's one of those.
Now, to go back to something that was kind of said earlier, I've adopted the Korean War Memorial. And very easy for me. I walk by it four or five days a week. And I just pick up a beer bottle or two. And, you know, once a month, we come on a Saturday morning and get the cigarette butts, except I want to give some praise to the city. In the last six, seven, no, I'm sorry, in the last year, the Parks Department actually does a good job, right down to cigarette butts, first time in my 40 years. So I've been cheating, you know? Only have to do 10% of the work I used to do. Now, I'm telling you this not to talk about me, but you may want to get someone to adopt this. Someone who lives very close, literally walks by every day, because I think people graffiti things because it's already started, that there's broken glass or something. So that's my suggestion to you, that maybe there's somebody who could take daily ownership. I'm just in awe of you for coming three and four times a year. But you may need someone to come 24 times a year.
Well, the history of the family was my grandfather, Carlo's father, had a barber shop on Vezzi Street. And across the street, on Vezzi Street, now there's a school there.
Yes.
What a great civic assignment for some child in a history class to have the honor of watching over the memorial.
So guess what? Councilmen are really useful people because they could facilitate that Cicero Jones grave in horrible Gray Cemetery. We have two high school students that are supposed to visit at school, they get school credit. I'd go check on them. Anyway, my point is, it's a fabulous idea.
I would forward this committee to look at, and why we're having this conversation around, I'm glad that we're having this conversation around education and civic engagement. Is there an opportunity at some point to have a conversation with this committee about creating that educational experience where a student, a Providence student, visits these memorials and learns about the individuals and the stories behind them? And I would like to have a conversation with you, Stephanie, about maybe creating some, almost like a museum-like atmosphere in our outdoors that tell the stories. That could be a way to mitigate some of the vandalism that we've been seeing, but more importantly, provide our students with the opportunity to learn about folks like Carlo La Fozia. Create a stanchion sign with information about the individual who's being honored and remembered. So that could be an opportunity for this committee to look at, not only about World War I. We've had a lot of great events over the last 400 years in Rhode Island's history. This could be one of those opportunities where there's not only civic engagement, but an opportunity to learn about history as well.
To be more specific, if I can, it needs to just not reference this singular one. We need to talk about all the memorials.
That's right.
In my particular community, there's one to Little John, I can't think of his first name right now, but, right. And so that's the one that I look after. But I think that there has to be a connective tissue, because if you don't connect it to something, then it will be destroyed, because people don't have a reference point for it. You know, 100 years ago seems like ancient history to young people now, and that's not the case. And so if there's a conversation, it has to be fuller and deeper when we start talking about this type of work.
So I think.
So I'd like to drive home, too, that there's the Italian-American immigrant experience within Carlo's story that needs to be told, too, with the monument. And you could tie in the history of immigration in Providence, particularly Italian immigration, since he was second generation. His parents were Italian immigrants. And you could talk about the immigrant experience in the neighborhood. So there's all of that element attached to Carlo. I think that's what makes this monument, or rather, this Memorial Square actually really unique. And that could be a part of that learning experience. And I think if people see that attached with the memorial, too, it, again, would be more deterrent that it's not just a stone.
And deeper and wider, right? Because it has to be deeper and wider, so that you can feel like it's a part of your story, too.
So I think we're in agreement, and we're going to ask somebody, going to ask the City Archivist if he'd start a conversation with you, Stephanie. And you have the support of the councilmen, so I think, I think we'll see something. Can we have a motion just on the question before us?
I motion that we have the modification to La Fozia Square Memorial Marker. We make the modification.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a second, and we have a second. Yeah. You know what? Sometimes you can cheat. And I have two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. And the vote is unanimous. We thank you for coming. We thank you for talking, engaging the councilmen in this matter.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for being invited here, and thanks for giving me an opportunity to tell you about a little bit that I have about Carlo. And the efforts that the city of Providence has shown in the past, I'm sure will put this in its proper perspective, and it'll be something to really look at.
Well, we're honored to have you in our presence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And I'll be happy, and we will make sure that all of you receive invitations to the rededication, hopefully, to take place on Veterans Day, as we all know, today is Independence Day. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Take it up on the other side. I didn't.
It's stunning.
I'll bet. I'm just going to pass this now.
Dave, I'm sorry.
Probably whoever was the general.
All right. Well, we're going to, and we have no other speaker. So we go to.
Item one.
Yeah. So we go to item one. For those of you who are beyond second grade, you normally think one comes first, but this is a unique body. So we're taking up the hiker, and the very first speaker is the City Archivist.
So briefing on this is a hiker located in Kennedy Plaza. It's a bronze figure, replica of a statue by Theodora Alice Ruggles Kitson, was commissioned by the National Association of Spanish War Veterans. The hiker was given in 1911 by the Rhode Island chapter of the National Organization, representing those volunteers who participated in the brief expeditions to Cuba and the Philippines in the Spanish-American War in 1898. Statue was apparently originally intended for the Veterans Lot at the North Barrell Ground, but was located in Exchange Place, now known as Kennedy Plaza. I don't know if I can ask a question at this point, but there is, the same statue is in the North Barrell Ground. So I, I'm a little unclear. I mean, who participated in the brief expeditions to Cuba and the Philippines in the Spanish-American War in 1898. Statue was apparently originally intended for the veterans lot at the North Barrow Ground, but was located in Exchange Place, now known as Kennedy Plaza.
I don't know if I can ask a question at this point, but there is, the same statue is in the North Barrow Ground. So I'm a little unclear. I mean, it isn't all that important, I think, for this conversation. But I, my understanding was that the original is the one in the North Barrow Ground, and the one at Kennedy Plaza is the copy?
Yes.
Actually, there are about fifty of this statue around the country. So it was originally designed for the University of Minnesota. And then Gorham purchased that design and manufactured them. There's also one in Pawtucket. So there are several of these statues around the country. And I could also just add at this point, they really do conflate the history of four of America's imperialist endeavors. And so it's a very interesting statue, actually. But it does sort of embody a lot of characteristics of white supremacy culture in those, combining the Spanish-American War, the Cuban Expedition, the Philippines, and the Boxer Rebellion in China. So, yeah, it is, and the dates on it really line up with the Philippine-American War, rather than all four of those. I think it was a way to acknowledge all of the soldiers who participated in all of those expeditions in a way that maybe the World War I soldiers received a different treatment. The soldiers who participated in those expeditions did not have the same acknowledgement at home.
Yes, yes. Wonderful.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I don't think I can share my video. It's telling me that the host has stopped it. So, but I hope that you can still see my screen when I present. I hope that's okay. But thank you, everyone, for giving me the opportunity to share.
So, Mark, will you introduce yourself?
Yes, absolutely. My name is Mark Allen, but you can call me Ben. I am a Filipino-American artist. I am an immigrant and a naturalized American citizen. And I am also currently a second-year graduate student in painting at the Rhode Island School of Design. Last summer, I received a grant from Saint Bartol Club Foundation in Boston. And I would like to use the grant to share and display at the City of Providence. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would use the grant and display a work at the replica sculpture by Theodore Alice Ruggles Kitson, the hiker. The work that will be displayed is referencing a banig, or a traditional mat that is used for sleeping, sitting, celebrating, praying, eating, and it is also a form of dwelling in the Filipino culture. It is also a protection and covering of the body. So the body is always involved, whether during, or during the making or the post-production of the object. I have a very intimate relationship with this object because I was born on it. And my, most of my family members were born on it as well. Also, when my father passed away from drowning, when they found his body a few days later, it was wrapped in this very object to prevent the body from deteriorating. So at a young age, this banig or mat has always been part of my identity. And as an artist now, I am reflecting on the making, the process, the display, history, and the product of this object to tell my story, to tell my people's story, my family and personal history, and to honor cultural diversity. The work is still in progress, but this is, these are some detailed shots of the work. The hiker. I first encountered the hiker when I missed the bus at the Kennedy Plaza last summer. I had to wait twenty minutes for the next bus, and I stood beside this statue to get some shade. But as I stood there and staring at this statue in his heroic pose, not knowing who he is or not knowing what he represents, I started to read what is on the pedestal. And there I learned that this statue commemorates Rhode Islanders who fought the Spanish War in the Philippines. Although the Americans colonized the Philippines after the Spanish colonization, the country, the Philippines, was still liberated from the three hundred thirty-three years of Spanish colonization and enslavement. Up to this day, Filipinos, back in the Philippines and diasporic Filipinos, carry American values and culture. And as I start to decolonize my past and decolonize my art-making, honoring an American soldier who fought for both US and the Philippines, I think that it is a good start for better cultural understanding and inclusivity. The installation, the mat will pull the soldier from the back as it drapes down to the bottom of the pedestal. It will not obstruct or cover the statue. Instead, it will honor it through caping and draping it as if he is a superhero. Installation, I will be using light rope to attach the mat to the statue and weights on the bottom for extra security. The installation dates will be the whole month of June in 2022 to commemorate the Philippine Independence Day. And insurance is still in progress. You may raise a question, and I do raise a question for myself on why it is important to have this work displayed. Well, first is to showcase diversity in Providence, or Rhode Island in general. There are so many people here from all over the world, either students, immigrants, tourists, and people in diaspora. I think that we should amplify those communities' voices, and a public art is always a good start. Second is to bring visibility to Filipino art, culture, and people. I have lived in the US for almost ten years now, and I am also an active member of the Filipino-American community in Newport, Rhode Island, and New Bedford, Massachusetts. We always strive to bring our art-making forward and let our voices and concerns regarding Asian hate, exclusivity, and labor be heard. By having this mat displayed in the heart of Providence, where it can be seen by thousands of people every day, I believe that it will bring cultural diversity, showcase visibility, and talk about the Filipino art-making that is present and alive in Providence and hopes to create resonance to diasporic individuals. Third is to promote sustainability, recycling, and upcycling. The whole mat, fifty feet long, will be made of recycled tarps, candy wrappers, Amazon packages, and plastic waste that is gathered in residencies, in the streets, in the parks, and establishments around Providence. And fourth is community building. I know that we always strive for a stronger community and united community. I believe that this work will make an impact on Filipino immigrants and all diasporic individuals here in Rhode Island and beyond. I say this because resonating and seeing a work of art that is impossible to encounter outside the motherland, we feel proud and we feel seen. And we also feel like we belong to the community. Therefore, we become better community participants. And lastly, is to bring color to Kennedy Plaza. I take the bus every day for the last two years, and I don't see many callers in the site or in this space. So I believe that by displaying this work, it will bring so much color in the space. And it will, maybe it will bring tourism as well, or it will make more people take the bus. Or, you know, as little as it may give a smile to the commuters, then I believe that it will do its job. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're gonna start with Becky. Do you have comments, thoughts, questions?
Um, yes, all of the above. So I want, first a question, a couple of questions. I wanted to confirm or clarify. I believe that you said that this modification would be temporary. Is that correct? It would be up for a month?
Yes, it will only be a month, temporary modification.
Okay. The second question is kind of connected to that. Do you, do you have a sense of how the materials that you will be using will age over that span of time?
Yes, so, oh, yeah, sorry. For the whole month, the plastic, the tarps, will, I believe, stay as it is for the whole month, and it will never obstruct or destroy or make marks to the statue during the display.
Okay. Another question that I have is concerning activation. Is there currently a plan to activate the site through performance or ritual or ceremony? How will you incorporate? Or how will you celebrate and tell the story of what the statue means or what the modification to the statue means with the broader public?
Absolutely. The Philippine Independence Day, which is on June twelve, I would love to create programming around and in the space. And this programming will show performances of cultural dances from the Philippines and also commemorating the statue and all the American soldiers who fought the war. This is through researching the history of this statue and researching the history of American soldiers. And the programming will include artist talk and readings about the history and the archival history of this statue. On the other hand, commemorating it through dancing in front of it, dancing around it, and also bringing the Filipino culture, clothing, maybe food around the area.
So my last question is about documentation. Is there currently a plan to document not only the modification during the course of the time that it's up, but also the activation and ritual ceremony?
Yes, yes, thank you. I also am in contact with photographer friends and videographer friends to document the display and document the process of displaying and during the activation. I am also documenting the way I am creating the work. And so everything will be archived and hoping to maybe submit it to the city for further use or something. Thank you.
Thank you. That's my last question.
Hi. I want to say first, I think this is an amazing idea, and I just really love the concept. And I think, you know, linking the statue and linking the history of American imperialism with the Philippines and with Filipino-Americans in this area, you know, it's just, you know, I can't believe we've never done it before, right? It's such a great idea. But I do wonder about providing context somehow for people who wouldn't get, you know, just in looking at it, they wouldn't know what, you know, what on earth is going on here. They wouldn't understand what the banig is representing. Is there a plan for some kind of textual display, even in a very limited way, to, you know, kind of reference the Philippines? And maybe I missed that, but I didn't hear you say that, I don't think.
Yes, I don't, thank you. Sorry, I don't think I said it. But I am also hoping to have a textual display that will introduce and explain what is happening on the site and in the statue. And also during the programming, I will be introducing what is happening, the context of the work, the context of the programming itself, and everything that is going to happen on the whole.
So then, so then a practical question, I guess, for this committee is what role of any do we play in reviewing textual materials that would go along with this installation?
I think probably not the job of the committee, but possibly the city might take a role.
Absolutely, yes. So your determination is about the social and cultural merit specifically. And then the city will be responsible for working with the artist on this installation. However, we welcome your contribution and thinking as this project is developed. I hope that you'll stay involved in that. So I would love to turn to you as this project develops and there's more details about that programming to see what other opportunities might be available.
I think my question is about the latter part of Eric's question about contextualizing, right? Because the problematic history of the sculpture is what you would be speaking to with the modification. And I guess for me, while the banig, I think I said that correctly, is a piece, and then programming is another piece. But again, I'm always wanting to go deeper and wider and trying to figure out, how do you talk to people who have no experience of war information or knowing about the war and knowing about the hiker? And how do you, how do you amplify that? I'm also thinking about, and, you know, Stephanie, you can help me in some way. I feel like there was something that was put in downtown made out of recycled materials, and it was set on fire or something. It was destroyed. And so that's what I think about, you know, we want people to see it, and it's only for a month, but I also don't want anyone to destroy it. Do you know what I mean?
And those are some of the details that we'll talk through with the artist as this becomes a reality.
Yeah, like, so I guess my question would be, is curriculum some kind of a learning tool for young people? I feel like this is, it's related to what we were talking about before. Like, that's what you're doing. You're trying to dislocate information and then create an opportunity to give new information or expand information and center different peoples in the information. And so have you thought about how you would go about that work?
I do. And that programming, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I apologize if I don't. There is an educational opportunity that will come along, the programming that will happen. And this is through teaching younger people or teaching people who are in this space to participate on how to weave. Because the whole piece is a woven piece. And, you know, showing them how to weave, teaching them how to weave, I think that it may bring some educational opportunities for everyone.
If I could just add another opportunity, the June 2022 proposed installation timeline. We are planning that there will be a PVD Fest that second week in June. And that creates a platform for multiple levels of engagement. From Alon, you might lead some of those, but also members of this committee and others might also want to present some programming around that. So I think that's a key opportunity with this proposed timeline that we would want to leverage to make sure that there is a wide audience who is engaging in all of these themes. And just if I can speak to this now, Chairman, I was gonna save it for the ACT report. This theme about education is coming up more and more. It's something that we heard also. We have a group of advisors who've been helping us to sort of implement this commemorative policy. That's something that they're very interested also is thinking about cataloging the markers, monuments, and memorials in Providence and telling those stories. And so I think that there is some momentum around really creating some more platforms for this. So I think more to come on that. But I promised I would go back to that, those groups and see about getting a committee together to start moving some of that work. But I'm hearing it echoed here, so I just want to acknowledge that.
So, Mark, I assume you heard everybody?
Micah, do you have a?
Just a question from Sylvia Sore about clarity around, we'll answer around.
Just a question from Sylvia Sore about clarity around, uh, we'll just answer around, uh, safety and kind of preserving the piece that we'll figure that out after.
Absolutely. That will be part of the technical review of this proposal that will happen subsequent to this group, uh, considering that this is appropriate to move forward.
I have a, a follow-up question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, to follow up on what, uh, you were saying, April, um, I 100% agree. I also want to thank Finn for the proposal.
Yes.
Um, I think it's very compelling, uh, but one thing, um, that I would like to offer is that although I understand that the need for this to be a temporary, um, exhibition or a temporary modification, I wonder if there's some way to increase the life of, of this, um, modification in the site, uh, so that, you know, it's not something that happens and then we have pictures or video documentation of it, but that doesn't exist in the site any longer. So if there could, um, perhaps incorporate, um, interpretive text that remains on, so that's a permanent, uh, modification or, um, some sort of documentation, uh, in the location of the monument that persists beyond, uh, the, the, the temporary modification.
Hmm. Uh, Mark, would you consider that? Um, and ever recently I saw just a sandwich board next, made of wood. And it was next to, uh, unsavory, well, actually it was next to a col- let me be careful. I language. It was next to a, a small, um, statue and it explained it. And I was told it's three, it lasted three years. Um, you know, and then the rain got to it. But anyway, would you think about that?
If it's possible, I would really love it to have a longer life or permanent. Uh, but that would be the one thing. Thank you very much for that possibility.
Well, I, I have two other things I want you to think about and it's not going to have anything to do with how I, uh, vote and support, but, uh, there is Cuba. And we have, uh, two very small Cuban associations. You can find them with no trouble. I think one's in Warren and, and I don't know where the other one is. But there may be some small, they're small and the Cuban population is tiny, but there may be some role for them. And then secondly, I want you to think about a website and I wouldn't suggest that this years ago. But people put up websites in three hours. And, uh, that could have a, a life longer, but also it could help promote your work. So would you think about a website that talks about as much as you want to talk about? I've learned, uh, something somebody wants me to do five times as much. And I won't tell you I resent it, but, but I, I'm not suggesting you do a lot more, but that you just think about it.
Um, thank you for that. Actually, absolutely. I've been thinking about creating a website for the display and for the process and also using social media platforms to engage with younger audiences. Um, social media could just be, um, Instagram or Facebook to show the process, to show the display, to show the activation and some writings and readings, uh, that will happen. Um, so that is another thing that I have been thinking about for this work.
And so my final comment to you, uh, you know, I always want, especially someone who's an academic, uh, to turn to bookstores or maybe to Brown and, uh, see if they might not produce, uh, be willing to either display or just having them available. You could promote it on your website. There are, you know, a hundred books on this subject that go into great depth and detail about America's role around the world.
Right.
This is a com- this is a complicated problem. Uh, Spain is, uh, mistreating, uh, these nations. And then the United States comes along with a lot of propaganda about how we're making everything better. And, uh, and, you know, a- again, I'm not going to talk anymore about politics, but you almost need a book. Um, so think about that, particularly if you do a website.
Uh, Elizabeth, notes that.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, any other? Any other comments from members of the commission? Do we?
I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, this modification.
Can I second this one too?
Okay, traditional, uh, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your, um, submission.
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, everyone.
And you'll be talking to Stephanie and saying where we might go in terms of the city helping you.
We'll, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, thank you.
Are we ready to go to our number? Mitchell Bannister.
You join us.
Yeah.
You all come together. I'm sure you're all speaking into the microphone.
Yes, I think that would be great.
So if, uh, Nancy, are you going to go first?
Yes, I am.
Would you introduce yourself?
I will. Is this on?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I've been told I very softly, so excuse me. Uh, first I'd like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to share this proposal with you. My name is Nancy Gosher Thomas. I'm an artist and arts advocate, arts consultant for Women and Infants Hospital and the former president of the Providence Art Club. I'm accompanied by Professor Bob Dilworth, artist and professor emeritus of University of Rhode Island and Mr. Gage Prentice, who is the sculptor. This proposal is on behalf of the Providence Art Club. The Providence Art Club was founded in 1880 by men and women, artists and patrons. Edward Mitchell Bannister was a dynamic force in the creation and founding of the Providence Art Club. To give you a little history on how this project came to be, as the art club celebrated its 140th year, a member of the art club commissioned sculptor Gage Prentice to create a bust of Mr. Bannister, a photo of which is included in your packet of information. The sculpture was generously gifted to the art club and is now on display for members and the public to see and admire. It was this magnificent piece of art that prompted a conversation and ultimately the idea that Edward Mitchell Bannister, who was so much a part of the cultural fabric at that time, be part of a larger public dialogue and honored with a place in Rhode Island's history with a permanent memorial. One cannot speak of Edward Bannister without mentioning his wife, Christiana Carteau. They were Providence's black Victorian power couple. I love to say that. Together, their contributions were significant. Of late, their former home on Benevolent Street has been saved from demolition and restored to its former glory. And the once-named McGee Street on College Hill has become Bannister Street, the first street in Providence officially named for an African-American. Edward Bannister spent the final 25, 25 years of his life largely in Providence devoted to building the city as a New England cultural center. Not only a founding member of the Providence Art Club, but also a founding board member of the Rhode Island School of Design in 1877. RISD Museum houses many Bannister works. Not only was he a great artist, but an abolitionist, philanthropist, thinker and personality of Providence. A quote by sculptor Gage Prentice, "Though my work and materials are traditional, their sentiment is not. I am not excited by grand heroic monuments that depict the myth of a person. My goal in pub- public figurative art is to create a human, approachable presence, not grand pedestal or monument, but a human being existing in the environment, inviting an encounter with the public. Seated on a public bench with a sketchbook and pencil in hand, Bannister will be seen in front of Market Square overlooking the Providence River." Quote, "In a moment, he lived countless times in his life. There he will welcome visitors to sit beside him and learn about his life, lessons and legacy. I want to help him cast a shadow out in Providence," end quote. And that again is Gage Prentice. Now, the Providence Art Club, working with other community leaders, has undertaken the ultimate tribute to Mr. Bannister by creating a life-size statue for him that will sit at Market, Market Square on the Providence River. Through strategic planning, much work has been accomplished over the past several years in working to expand the Providence Art Club's vision and mission and engage in public dialogue that will encourage critical community partnerships while building and maintaining cross-cultural relationships. At, as this project unfolds, we will be working with other like-minded nonprofits to develop programs that expand efforts to be more intentional toward diversity, equity and inclusion. With over 50% raised of the $200,000 needed to complete the project, we are excited, eager and encouraged by the immediate response from various public leaders and individuals in the community. In your packet, you'll find support materials, including the original proposal, a photograph of the bust of Edward Bannister, an image of the wax maquette also here for you to see. Photographs of the Bannister Memorial, uh, the monument at North Burial Ground, which was created and erected by artist members of the Providence Art Club. A letter of support from Rhode Island School of Design for maintaining the sculpture and various articles on Mr. Bannister's life and contributions and an infinite informational piece in the form of a rack card, although what you're seeing is just a draft of the rack card. Missing in this letter of, is the letter of support from Professor Bob Dilworth, which I have available for the record. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Although I would like to, Mr. Dilworth, Professor Dilworth and, um, Mr. Gage, speak to the project as well.
Okay.
Well, good afternoon, everybody, and, um, and thank you for inviting us here. It is an honor for me to be here to speak to you, um, especially on this particular topic. I'm an artist and I have been living in Rhode Island for a little over 30 years now. Edward and Bannister has been my north star that whole time. Um, I first saw his work at the Smithsonian Institute as a student growing up in Virginia, uh, which is where I'm from. So it is, uh, real important for me to be a part of this committee and to be a part of this effort to see Edward, to see a monument of, of Edward and Bannister, um, in a life size that will be approachable by everyone in this state, in this country and in this world. Um, as an artist, he has always been my hero. He has always been someone that, um, I have looked up to. When I am painting in my studio, I think of Edward Mitchell Bannister as, uh, not just an ancestor, not just as someone who came before me, but as someone who also guides and, uh, and is there in some ways, talking as I am painting and cutting and, uh, doing all kinds of drawing and, uh, and all kinds of other collage work and, and mixed media work. Um, his paintings are astounding. They are absolutely amazing. And if you ever get the chance to see his work in person, you will see that he was, um, an artist that artists would always look up to. So I'm going to probably end it here. Maybe I'll say also something. I, I think Ray, remember this is many years ago that we started the Edward and Men- Bannister Society, which grew into, uh, uh, an artist group of African-American artists. We showed around the state and I think we showed out of the state a few times. So, um, his shadow is still here. We, um, live under that shadow and I think it's a great shadow to live under. Um, maybe shadow is not the right word. Um, perhaps I'll say spirit. Um, perhaps I'll say, um, he is a personality that will never, ever die for me and for our, I think, our fellow artists. So I'm going to end that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gage Prentice and I'm going to be the artist. Um, I'm trying to condense everything I want to say so I don't ramble. As an artist, the, the things that really excite me are, uh, people, places and things that, uh, make me feel a resonance and a presence. And I, I, before I knew anything about Edward, uh, I knew about his wife, Christiana, because I saw her amazing bust at the State House. And I'm all, you know, as a sculptor, I'm always looking for those things because I see a lot of paintings, but I don't see a lot of, uh, physical, you know, 3D representations of people. Uh, so first I, I learned about her because my, my wife is an American historian. And then through some strange synchronicity, I was invited to go see, uh, a show of Edward's paintings all in one place. And I'm like, well, you know, she has a bust in the State House. Let's go see who this artist guy is. And I went there and I had such a visceral, visceral, visceral response to his work. It, as an artist who tries to capture the presence and the gravity of a person, place or thing, because I, I mostly do figurative work and landscapes. And all of a sudden I was surrounded by these landscapes that captured such power and mood and charisma. And just as an artist, when I see art that just captures the presence of the person who created so strongly, I'm just immediately inspired. So as luck would have it, I met the person who was going to commission me to do the portrait bust of him at that show. And we started kind of kicking that idea around as we discussed his work. Uh, fast forward, I, I get the commission and I start the process of living with his paintings, living with the only, uh, three images I could find of him in the world. Unfortunately, both of the same direction under three-quarter view. So I had to imagine the whole rest of his anatomy for that. But trying to find his presence and having all of his work to draw from, I was just steeped in it for, uh, almost a year and it was such a pleasant experience. It, it, it led me to, uh, ask other people who knew about him to learn more about the man, his charisma, his history, uh, from Canada, his, he was an avid sailor. He used to go all over Providence, uh, and travel around institute, doing his paintings outside to capture, uh, all of the power of his environment. And he was just so inspiring and so wonderful that I, I just felt him in the studio with me. And when I delivered this bust to the art club, uh, the most important part of it was that he would cast a shadow in the place he helped found and that other people could just be in his presence again. I couldn't go back in time and pull, pull forward. But he, it felt like I was bringing him home. And then, you know, a little bit of time goes forward and I see the effect that his presence has in the environment of the art club. And now people wanted to see it and they, they, they really enjoyed being around him. And I thought to myself, how great would it be if we could take what's here at the art club and give it out into the city? Because I think the soul of the city, the identity of the city isn't only in its architecture and people, but also in the art that is seen and interacted with on a daily basis. and the people, but also in the art that is seen and interacted with on a daily basis. And I love abstract art. I love things that move and color, but what really resonates with me as an artist, as a human being, is seeing other human beings. I love figurative work. And I'm tired of seeing warriors and politicians and people of that nature put up one huge pieces of stone and just, you know, made more than what they are. I think that doesn't resonate with me. I like the feeling that I got when I was a child visiting Philadelphia and seeing Ben Franklin sitting on a bench, reading a newspaper. And as a kid, I could just sit down next to him, look over his shoulder, play with the bird on the end of the bronze bench, and just feel connection. This was a human being, I'm a human being, and they changed the world, you know? And I was more interested in learning more about him and about his story than I ever would have been seeing, you know, grand monuments. So the most important thing for me is to be able to share his presence and maybe inspire people to be curious about who this person was, why they're here, what they're doing, and just have a seat, relax, and be part of the environment, and let this be part of the identity of the city. Because I don't see a lot of people like him monuments, you know, memorialized in and around the city. So I guess, I guess that's, I'm gonna stop talking, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, just, sorry, one more thing. Kind of as an Easter egg, because I can't put Christiana on this. He did a portrait painting of her. I think it's the only one that I have found. And what I'm gonna try to do, because he's sitting there, but he's not reading a book, he's sketching in a sketchbook. The first page, I'm gonna try to reproduce a sketch of that painted in the bronze. That's kind of odd to her, because I met her first. But also what I want to do, and this is something for people who get close enough to look, but I want the sketch of what he's drawing to actually be what he's looking like, looking at on the other side of the river, modern day. So bridging the gap between 1901 and today, so that not only, he's not a relic. No, this is not a relic. I want this to be a living part, connected to the present city.
Not you?
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
I just want to add that Bannister does not belong to the Art Club. Bannister does not belong to the state of Rhode Island. Bannister does not belong to the United States. Bannister belongs to the world. Yeah. But his work also speaks to not just one location, and it doesn't speak to just one group of people, but it speaks to the world of people. So I just wanted to throw that out there. As we think about creating this monument to this incredible man, a monument that will be designed in such a way that it is accessible to everyone, that they can walk up to it and be a part, and be in its presence, and be a part of his personality and the person that he wants.
So on the heels of what Bob was just saying, and that Mr. Bannister continues today to make his mark on internationally and nationally, and I just wanted to mention, I don't know how many of you know, that one of his paintings at the Sotheby's auction that was valued at 50,000, between 50 and $75,000, went for over $277,000. So, you know, it just, it gives me goosebumps to think that, you know, this amazing artist is continuing to make his mark all over the world.
So we're gonna go to the members of the commission.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I must say, when I started reading this, I felt like, why Edward Bannister? I'm from Rhode Island, and I've known about the Bannisters since I was a little girl. And the fact that he is memorialized, right, is an amazing thing. And I have seen his work and have heard his name quite often in my education. And I, I don't know, I feel like, I feel like it would be nice to talk about the other folks who have been through and in as artists here. And listening to you talk, you've almost convinced me that maybe. I really appreciate you talking about how Christiane would be in there, because that, I must say, proved most of my salt, right? Because without her, there is no Edward Bannister, right? Thank you, at all. So I'm gonna let the rest of this, because I don't have a question. I think that what I had was really a statement, because I do feel like he's been recognized here, and I can't, I can't kind of let that go, right? And so I'm not sure how I feel about another monument to him. So, yeah, I'm gonna leave it there.
I'm still sort of formulating my questions and my ideas, so if there's someone else who wants to.
I don't really have a question, but I guess to just follow up with what you just said, when you say he's been recognized, you're thinking of the North Burial Ground?
I'm thinking of Bannister House. I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of.
The street.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the street. I'm thinking of.
May I?
Please.
Of course. I'm looking for the right word, so I don't sound whatever. But as the father of some of those children that you're talking about, Bannister Street, it's named both after Christiane Cattell-Bannister and Edward Bannister purposely, and her name comes first. And it took the city 400 years to agree to have a street named after somebody black. So I don't think 2% of the people who walk by that street know who it's for. Stages of Freedom is going to put up additional signs when the pandemic is over, so that you can read who the street's named after. One of the signs has been stolen three times, because, and I now know who's stolen it. His name's Bannister, and he's a student at Providence. No, I'm sorry. Anyway, we've had a conversation with somebody who didn't even know who Bannister was. He just liked the name. So that's the one, that the street doesn't do what we want it to do. Two, the house doesn't do what we want it to do. I do about five tours a year, and only, and now I don't take anybody to the Bannister House, because I only take New Yorkers who are on a bus, because people are not up to walking that far, seriously. So the house doesn't do what we want it to do. Ruth Simmons saved that house on the last day of her presidency.
Yes.
They used it for refrigerators for 11 years. Refrigerators. And as they tell me, little refrigerators. Anyway, Walter Stone and I, two presidents, got the black president to do that. And I don't think 5% of Rhode Islanders know that house is there and have been saved. I talked to the people who live in it, and only two tourists, they average two tourists a week. I'm talking about knock on the door, stand in the yard. So I can't even tell you how much work there is to be done. Christiane Cattell-Bannister in the State House, that's Ed Enman, I chaired the commission that brought it there. And I talk to people all the time, particularly black women, and I say, have you been up to see Christiane Cattell-Bannister? And they say, no. So being in the State House doesn't get you where I'd like you to get to. So this does. A million people a year will see this sculpture. A million. And so this out equals any and everything that has ever been done for the Bannisters, seriously. So last thing I'd say to you. You know, George Washington is famous. There aren't 20 famous people in this country that everybody knows. And I'd like, and there are black people everybody knows, but most of them, Maya might be up there. I'm not sure there's a black artist. We know the 20 famous black artists. I'm not sure there's a single black artist that rises, you know, certainly don't rise to Picasso or anything like that. So this is gonna be ours, that people get to see and get to know, and I'm gonna push a little harder for more copy on the whatever, because I want Christiane to be in there, to have, you know, not, and she was.
Yeah.
So I'm not arguing with you. I'm just telling you how hard it is to obtain fame, notoriety, and to be an, I'm interested in Bannisters as educational figures for the whole community. So that's my little.
May I, Chairman?
Yes.
May I just say one, well, maybe two other things to your point? And yes, and Mr. Bannister would be the first to say that he would be, he would not be without Christiane.
I'm clear. I'm a Rhode Islander. I am the person who's from Rhode Island on this panel, so I'm very clear.
Yeah. And so, as the chairman was saying, you know, the space that this sculpture will be in will be viewed by probably hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of people who visit Rhode Island. And I'm unaware of any other artist that is kind of honored in this way. And the text that will go alongside, which I think is also included in that photograph, will be significant in, you know, the accomplishments that Mr. Bannister and Christiane have made to Providence and Rhode Island and to the world.
And I also hear what you're saying. Also, as an artist, I understand that, you know, artists need to have support. They need to have people on their side to do what they're doing. And it's really clear that without Christiane Cattell, Edward Mitchell Bannister would not be the Edward Mitchell Bannister that we know. So I would propose, instead of still suggesting that she's a footnote, that we make a statue for her, you know, so that, you know, she is recognized as, now, I mean, you know, she was not just Edward Mitchell Bannister's wife. She had, she made accomplishments of her own, quite outside of, you know, her husband. So I would think that Rhode Island should consider as well, I mean, this is probably not the topic for this commission at this point, and maybe not for us right now, but just as a suggestion, that there should be a monument for her accomplishments and her contribution to the state of Rhode Island as well.
So I, you know, you always, when you get home, you say, I should have said that. So we are naming a square after Nancy Elizabeth Prophet. Again.
Thank you.
Washington Place in front of RISD's Administrative Building. And we have basically, we have agreement from the council person, and we have agreement from the university, not that they have anything to say about it. But anyway, so that will be the next artist black with public recognition, and that's a great square.
Listen, thank you for saying that, Jim, and that was, yeah.
But I would also say, on a very low note, so Stages has done about five things for Christiane Cattell-Bannister. I go around and brag, the first talk I ever gave in Rhode Island was on her at the John Hay Library in 1982. And I was shocked that they knew I knew anything and that they invited me. And though I'm interested in 50 black historic figures, she was my first. And when we had a chance at the State House to get her there, I got it done. So I'm with you. Now, Bob, that's a big thing you just said, because we're talking, we're putting a plaque up on the building where she had a, where she was a hair. Again, when the pandemic lifts, because one of the elementary, I'm sorry, one of the high schools gave us the first 300 towards the 5,000 we need, and we're dumb. We agreed to do it, because they gave us 300. There will be more.
Okay.
There will be more.
One other, one other project that you may want to consider at a later date is that Edward Bannister has, as I had shown, this wonderful marker at North Burial Ground.
Already done. Someone gave us $5,000 the other day.
For?
Her.
Thank you.
So she is not on the.
She is not on this.
Yes. And he actually gave us 4,800.
Thank you. That's what I'm asking.
I'm salty. No, I do, I think that's why I'm salty.
Yes, that's what I'm asking, yes.
Remember, I'm gonna defend those men for half a minute. She died two years later, and they would have had to regroup, and everything is in the here and now. So, you know, I don't know what they would have done if she had died earlier at the same time, but, you know, she's 1903. This man, front page of the New York Times, Negro, is named the Artist of America. And, you know, he's the first national artist, because there are none. Everybody's local. And this is just, you know, I'm supposed to be listening to you all and voicing my whatever later, but now this is big stuff to have done. And I think the Art Club, you know, can I get real quick about this? At Stages of Freedom, when we were having this conversation this morning, when you do a project, do you do something that at this level, you're talking about our kids' projects, do you do something at this level for $1,000, or you do it at this level for $10,000, or do you do it at $100,000? And we always do the $1,000 or the $5,000, because we want to do 20 things a year. And Christiane deserves a public statue, and we haven't even thought about it, because it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that would stop us from doing eight other things. But Bob, I heard you.
Okay. May I also say that as we're talking about Edward Mitchell Bannister and recognition, let's not forget that there's an Edward Mitchell Bannister Gallery at Rhode Island. Larry Sykes, unfortunately, who passed away a few years ago, fought very hard to get that, to get that namesake for that gallery, which still exists today. So I just wanted to mention it. As we mentioned, the house and the street, there's also the Edward Mitchell Bannister Gallery at Raff.
I just want to say thank you all for understanding my reservation and my saltiness, right? Because it's a lot to talk about the genius of an artist, right? But it also takes people to make one a genius, yes? We can agree? And so I just appreciate you understanding where it is that I'm coming from. Thank you.
I couldn't understand this more, because my entire, my entire ability to do my art and change my life in a way that I could follow this would be impossible without my partner, who's also named Christiane. So that wasn't lost on me when I met Edward through Christiane. And I understand, I 100% understand. And I would never omit. And I would never omit her, I would never do anything but celebrate her inclusion in part of this. And I wish, I wish I could have her as part of this.
Sitting next to her, right?
But no, I think she should be on her own.
Yeah.
But yeah, I completely understand.
Okay.
We're gonna have last comment, I think.
I don't want to let this moment pass without thanking you for this proposal and the time, the labor, the care and intention that you put in the design. I think it's an important monument to have, an important memorial and public commemoration practice to have in, in our city. I also appreciate that there's this invitation, that it includes this invitation to get to know the person, not only like, and to have a personal relationship through physicality, through like your spatial relationship to the monument, but also there's, you know, the story that's present on the site, which is, I feel like a broken record. I always feel like we need to have this in text there. We need to contextualize it so that, you know, it doesn't just become part of the landscape. And to that end, I will also add that I feel, in addition to RISD's, in addition to RISD saying that their commitment to caring for the monument, I also think that it should be an intentional part of their curriculum and engagement with students. Is that something?
Yes, actually, I've had many, many conversations with many people at RISD. And Tony Johnson, I'm just trying to think now, Bethany, Bethany Costello, several individuals. And so that's exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful.
So I think, and to your point, absolutely. I think there should be always an educational component. But one of the things, and having a plaque there is really important for people to read on spot. But also I think we should consider including a barcode where one can bring a camera as, you know, as you do when you go to the restaurant and, you know, the menu comes right up on your phone. You can use that barcode, everyone has a phone, use a barcode to get to that information. And maybe that could be also, I think, I, you know, hear, heard you talk earlier about connections to other monuments and other efforts in the city. That same system can be used to connect it, contextualize it, and, you know, give the history as well as all the other kinds of information that's important for people to know.
So. Sorry, can I just say one comment? Sorry, please finish up there.
Does the city have?
Does the city have somewhere on their website that would compile all these QR codes for things all around the city?
So I think this is the conversation, actually, that we've been opening up today. So more, more to come on that. But I just wanted to say from the perspective of the Department of Art Culture and Tourism, I just wanted to say how glad we were to see a private commission of Edward Banister being proposed for public space. I think this is such a critical part of our cultural legacy and it would be wonderful to have that included as part of our public realm, not just for locals who may know the story, but for visitors as well. So I just wanted to officially put that on the record.
So, you know, I take every chance I get to praise the city because I sometimes can't. Anyway, I'm thrilled because it's on city property as well.
Yeah.
So we have real players in this. We have the art club funding and making it available and doing the insurance and we have RISD, but the, and they do a fabulous job maintaining that piece of land and then we have the city making the land available. And then we're going to have, as Nancy said, going to have public, we're going to have other organizations helping with the educational aspects of this. And I wanted to remind the artists that we're, you know, all this self-promotion for Stages of Freedom. We're at, at Ten West Minister, where Banister had an art gallery for a short time. And you look straight across from, he will be looking.
At your space.
And, you know, if you make him sideways, you look at Drew College, where he had a gallery as well. But, and I say this all the time, he walked across that bridge to his wife's business and she, to him, there is no better place for him to be seated, none in all of Providence.
I would also like to encourage as, as well as RISD to include other institutions. I know that we're working.
Yeah, yeah.
Immediately because I think everyone should feel invested.
Yes.
In this effort.
Yes.
And not bring them in after the fact. But not bring them in after the fact, but, but right now, Rick is, you know, I think is really critical in, as a partner, as well as RISD. And there are other institutions, I'm sure, who would want to be a part of this.
So I'm gonna, are there any members of the commission that have anything else to raise or say?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are there any other monuments existing on the side or proposed for that particular area that would be within view?
No, RISD's been talking for years about putting something on the side of Marketplace. They haven't done it. They had a major artist at one time, but it didn't work out. I've gotten involved because I'm worried that it won't quite be right. You attach something to the side of a historic building, you've got to be careful.
Right.
But there is no proposal. There was a proposal for something, for another personality, a block away, but there is no proposal.
Okay, so I want to be very careful in how I say this. I would like to see that this effort doesn't impede any other efforts to contextualize the broader site. Yeah.
And the largest space is between the auditorium and, and the marketplace.
Marketplace, yeah.
And somebody, RISD has control of that, so that also belongs to the city.
So, right, so this is a public park, Market Square is a public park. So the Board of Parks Commissioners will be the next to, you know, sort of give this project passage. And it's the Parks Commission, they will be the ones who determine where, where this is actually cited. They have the ultimate decision around that. In terms of the aesthetic and site-specific review of this project, that's the role of the Art and City Life Commission. So this, like every project, will have to go through a series of steps in the technical review. And so all of these conversations, I think that's a, that's a great note. And so that will certainly be part of the conversation, each one of those points in the decision-making process. I don't want to contradict the chairman. I think there may be a small plaque on the, on the building, but I will double check that as a, as a follow-up here.
The plaque, the plaque's on Marketplace on the front.
Is on the front, okay.
Facing North Main.
Okay, so I.
Nothing on the back.
I think it will be, though, yeah, important to look at all of that as the Parks Department determines where the final site might be.
That it's balanced.
Yep, yeah.
I think that there is actually a plaque right on the, the wall facing Memorial Park, where the Korean War Monument is in the street. But the statue itself would be in no way impeding or anywhere near that.
Okay.
You're saying there's a plaque facing west?
I think we should confirm this as a follow-up, as an action step as a follow-up.
Okay. Okay, so do I hear a motion?
Can I do it this way?
I would move to accept the proposal as submitted to create the monument to Edward M. Banister at Market Square.
I second.
Second.
Hi.
We're not going to do anything different today. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, love.
Goodbye.
It means a lot.
Thank you.
So you should be in contact with Stephanie to get to the next.
We'll forward this on, yep, yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. The report from ACT, I just have a short report. I just wanted to just update folks about the action steps that have come out of the last meeting. The material about the Christopher Columbus statue was forwarded to the Board of Parks Commissioners for their consideration. And that meeting has been rescheduled twice. They are supposed to meet in November. No date has been set yet. I will keep you posted as soon as that date is confirmed. And I actually don't have an update on the marker that we approved moving. I will find that out as well. So, short report. And also just one endorsement, too. If you have not looked at Monument Labs' National Audit, they've recently, with their Mellon Foundation grant, released a national monument audit. So they had communities across the country submit to that. Really interesting. And then they did some analysis about the themes, who's been commemorated, who's not, you know, the moments in time, just really interesting project. And so I just suggest everyone takes a look at that.
I saw that in the Times the other day and I was busy, but I pulled it out. Did Trump, did Rhode Island?
Rhode Island is, has a presence in there, yep. So, yeah, so, so, yeah, and check it out. It's actually a very interesting report. And I know the advisory that did inspire them to think a little bit more about this education piece, so we'll see what happens there.
Are we missing anything? Any member of the commission, final comment or? You're all glad to be here today?
Do you need to officially get the call for adjournment?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm about to adjourn. Do you have anything to add?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Do you want me to make a motion to adjourn this meeting, Chairman? I officially make that motion.
And the time is one fifteen.
I second.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And thank you, viewing public.